Hey Tom, back in the house.
Good day, I was real big time working up there for you.
He was here this afternoon.
Yeah. Um, we'll call Blake and order, welcome our guest. Scotty, will you do our, uh, bid to the...
He probably had him in his pants.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. James, will you do our guy's place here?
That's great. Heavenly Father, we give you thank you, God, for what you've done for our citizens, guys individually, God, we pray that you help us have some cohesiveness, God, in our community, and all of our members of our community, God, that we love each other, that we respect each other's opinions, God, even though sometimes we might not agree, but it will be as one, God. We just thank you for sending your son, for all you do for us, God, each and every day, for all the things you've given us, for all the things you will give us, and we pray a special blessing on our city, God, remember that leaders, God, our community, God, that we'll just work together in everything that we have to do, just now pray, amen.
Thank you, James. I'm going to, uh, I was just here to meet you first. First of all, I'd like to make a recommendation that we approve or amend it from my opinion.
The lady that wrote it.
I said, "Thank you." Thanks, James. Uh, both? Okay, uh, I'm about to make a recommendation, we approve our account payable bills. If that then okay?
I'll make it, Mr. James. We have one little thing we're working out, but it's okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. James. Thank you. Thank you, both. Okay? I'm gonna skip around here a little bit. Terry Pierce has asked me, "Terry, if you want to come to council, Terry, if you'll come forward and say whatever it is you want to say."
I'm a member of local, not too many.
Terry, let me ask you one question, please, okay? Are you here representing the union, or Terry Pierce, or both, or...
Well, both.
Okay.
And, uh...
What is?
Okay. About an incident Saturday, we had a rally.
Okay.
At three o'clock, 3:00 PM, and everyone went to leave, you know, we have two entrance and exits. On our side, our police officers came up, made all of us move back out of the way, and we were allowed to take it in our normal procedure. And I'd like to know about that.
Terry, you have two entrance and two exits down there?
Yes.
On each side of the guardhouse?
Yes.
To come out both ways and go in both ways? Or do you have a woman's?
I live at the, uh, north.
Or Pierce is over?
North entrance.
Yeah, north entrance, okay. Tell me exactly then, what I'm always seeing, when I have been by there, I've seen the guys walking across the...
Back and forth, yeah.
Yeah, walking across the driveway, very slowly, but walking there and forth, and there's nothing wrong with that, okay? Uh, it's long, how long was the block of traffic there, Terry?
Normally, some, they don't get blocked at all, so they fly, you don't get out of the way.
They answer, okay? Uh, they make you move.
On that...
I wasn't blocking the road.
Thirty or forty-five seconds.
So y'all were not blocking the road?
No.
Y'all weren't in the middle?
Yes.
Did they make you get out of the way?
Made us get out, and get back.
Okay. How, did they say, "I'll give you a reason," did you been there too long?
No.
I mean...
No reason.
So I have knocked off the eBay and pushed down?
No reason.
Thank you, your word, okay?
Okay. About the third car that came up, he kinda cut my way, the boy's coming on the other side, we had the rally, we had no other than normal.
Okay.
I placed my hand on the hood to keep them from running over my feet. Police officer grabbed me by the arm and said, "Play your hand on one more figure." You wanted to see it.
Yeah, who was the police officer?
I don't know, I'm saying...
No, I'm, I'm somebody, I can find that out.
Okay.
Okay. I have knocked off the place, I'm thinking, you might have reached, you talked to him this morning?
I didn't know that, but I have knocked off.
You called me this afternoon? And I don't know who the place was, and I don't know his side, and that's totally, okay?
Okay.
So I'm gonna find that out.
Right, and he told everybody not to walk and run cars, the next one did, and they took me to jail.
Okay.
Jeff Compton's son was on my side, there was a little break, Jeff was on the other side, this boy, Jeff Compton.
I know Jeff, did you hear?
Yes, yes, his son was gonna walk over to be with his father, and they saw him, and they grabbed him and put him in the car.
You had Jeff too?
No, not Jeff too, just his son.
Okay, okay.
Said, "You're going to jail, and put him in a car."
Okay.
My question is, what law allows our police officers to do that?
Terry, there's two sides to that story. There's a free side, y'all's side, union's side, and rights, and that point, that is, okay? Uh, y'all have the right to picket.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
Those people that work there, um, who have the right to work, or have the right to cross that line, I'm not thinking of that.
Right, I agree.
See, is that why, okay?
I agree.
As fact, Scott, do you have any clarification on what these guys can actually do in that driveway, or...
Well, I'm obviously not a labor lawyer, but, uh, as I understand it, it's a lot of gray area, y'all obviously have the right to picket, y'all obviously have the right to do mask picking, uh, the restriction is you just can't block people from entering and exiting, and what is blocking? That's the question, right, how much it is. Uh, what I think we should do is let us look into what happened, and talk with our officers, and, and see what happened, and see what maybe we might do different, or, or whatever, and just get back with it, that would be a good idea. So we, we need to look into, see...
Terry, I'm here, I'm here, you're... No, but let me explain something to you, Terry. By law, if that plant calls and asks us to send a police down there, we have to do that, but we have been very conservative there, and I've asked them to sit there, which is like it's what they're doing, we haven't had any trouble with that. Uh, I'm crossing that driveway, I have no problem with y'all walking across that driveway and wanting to post traffic, don't pack up out on that highway, you understand what I'm saying? Uh, as long as it's a normal, it's a reasonable flow in and out of there, I mean, you can't just stand out there forever in driveway, you know, we want y'all to love that, as long as y'all walk across there at a reasonable pace, okay? And I think y'all have been fairly reasonable, I mean, I said, "Let one car go out, and y'all walk across, another car come out, and y'all walk across, but another car come out." That is not good for you guys, for sure, it's not good for the city, and it's not good for the country, so I hope, pray that y'all get that thing.
Well, a very few labor laws in the state of Alabama that favor the working man. And that's one right we didn't have, is the right to picket, and we weren't allowed that opportunity today.
Okay.
The south entrance, no one ever went over, we only had two police officers standing, they were both on our side, the other side was there.
Okay.
Uh, as you mentioned, in our phone conversation, we had state troopers.
Let me, let me clarify that while we're talking about it, okay?
Okay.
Uh, I knew them state troopers down there, and when I came home Friday night, and seen them sitting out front, and I was telling, I called my wife, and I said, "I'm gonna be in for me," and they were down there Saturday morning, and Richard was saying the same thing, I want, I want to verify one thing, nobody's sitting at this table, me or anybody else called and requested state troopers, they were sent up here.
I had someone call me at home after...
Evidently, by the way, but the governor...
I thought the governor asked him, he was in them, I didn't send him, but I didn't request him. I had opted to respect him Friday evening, before the jury came.
Fair fact, I stopped him, and I said, "Will y'all please tell me what's going on?" And they said, "We're state troopers, and we're sent up here to enforce the law." So that's all I know about that.
We had six at three o'clock.
Yep.
Already held out four police, you know, that's...
Nobody's sitting?
Had three on our entrance, three on our entrance. When their plan was over, they committed this on our conduct, said that's all no problem with us, didn't say what problem was.
I don't know how it came, I don't know why, what's, I'm getting your hat, uh, I'm not... But evidently, they just heard something, or... I know, I know, there's some of you people crossing the line, it's called the girl's office, I do know that, that's a fact, they always tell us that. But, and I know, we hadn't had any real questions, and I know, Terry, I was talking to this police officer tomorrow, I'm gonna find out who it is, okay? We'll take it on.
Uh, if we're breaking the law, we ain't nobody, maybe if we're not, we ain't be allowed to proceed here.
All we're gonna do is enforce the law, wherever the law is, that's all I have. Okay?
You ready, Terry?
Whatever, whatever. Scott, tell me what's legal, I saw the weekend on the list, we can enforce the law, okay? I said, I, I just hope y'all agree, I'm sorry.
All right.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Does the police keep a record of who's calling?
I guess, yeah, they have a log on it, of course, a log, but...
Number three, who's your president of the arts council?
No.
Who? Every who?
I think I've been elected, I think I've been elected to call. We elected, we're all to call.
You're elected, yeah. I know you want to come, guys.
No, actually, first of all, we would like to say thank you to the mayor and the city council for supporting North Carolina Arts Council for seven years, especially ever since y'all have been in office. Um, the city's always been so gracious to let us use the rec center and our charge, uh, as well as the city employees hanging our banner, anything basically that we've, we've needed, you guys have always stepped up to the plate and helped us, so first and foremost, before we do anything, we want to say thank you for your, your support in the past, and, um, tell you a little bit about our upcoming festival, our festival this year is March first and second. Again, this year, it's gonna be at the, at the rec center, um, but our concert on Saturday night being at the double center. Um, once again this year, the festival is, uh, there is no charge for admission, uh, also the concert, uh, we made the announcement last week, being headlined by the Golden Game of Nashville, Tennessee, uh, who, and they have charted multiple times on the gospel charts, well-known in the gospel, uh, music industry, and Joseph Baldwin's gonna be opening for us this year, but with a twist, Joseph is going to be performing all gospel music as well. So this is gonna be a, um, a gospel music concert for the entire family, uh, and again, no charge for admission, so this is a way that we want to get back to the community, uh, is to try and keep everything that we do free, uh, give an opportunity for a lot of people to come out and see something that if you went to Birmingham Museum of Art, or some of your other places, you know, it would be rather expensive to go and take the entire family and go, uh, to, to a festival or to a museum like that. Um, we are very fortunate here to have Jerry Brown in our community. Um, Jerry will be headlining, of course, our festival, we have a couple of other local artists, but primarily our artists this year are from, uh, throughout the state, as well as we have artists coming in from Mississippi, Georgia, and Tennessee. Uh, of course, this is a different subject for, for another day, but we need a bigger facility, but we'll, we'll skip on over that for tonight, but once again this year, we had to turn away artists that won't come and be a part of our show, part of our festival. So, um, we are growing, and, uh, this is our sixth year, and, um, last year was the year of arts in Alabama, and our festival received, um, a lot of different accolades, um, from, from the state and from the Alabama Bureau of Tourism and Travel, and that's basically where I'm leading into, um, you can have the best festival in the world, the best show in the world, but without it being publicized, nobody knows about it, you know, you're not, you're not gonna have many people to see what you have, and you're not going to have artists and food vendors that are wanting to come back year after year. And, uh, we had a very even mixture of retiring artists combined with new artists, so we've got the people that are, that have come in the past or wanting to come back, plus we have interest from the new artists. What we're here tonight is to ask the city council for $1,000, and we would like to use this money to publicize our festival this upcoming year. That will be in magazine ads, newspaper ads, radio, television, uh, we've already made three TV appearances already, uh, we do a lot, that, as much as we can, uh, a lot, a lot of people are very generous when they hear the name Jerry Brown, and they realize we're a nonprofit organization, and we have now grown to the point where we're taking monies that we make at the festival, and we're putting them back in our schools. We now have, um, our children's art programs are growing each and every year, and, uh, honestly, last year, the children's art was really, intrinsically, probably the, uh, the head of the whole festival. We had more response over the children's art than anything else that we did. So, have any questions?
Anybody got a question?
Well, um, yeah, I understand that y'all have already contacted the council commission, and they've agreed to help me with your advertising campaign. That is correct, the city council, we, we went before the city council, Ed and Todd Vines went before the, uh, the county commission, and they, uh, passed and agreed to provide us with $1,000 as well for publicity of our festival, and we're hoping that the, uh, the city council will do, do the same.
I'd like to see the statewide commercial, Terry, what I'm talking about, what I'm talking about.
The talking judge.
You can, you can imagine how many people over the state, traveling around, helping various missions, I know how many people watch those.
I was in Arizona a few years ago, and you know how much pot, uh, pottery and that sort of thing's in Arizona? And I met this lady that lived there, that was a retirement community, and she asked me where I was from, of course, she knew I was from the south, but, you know, Alabama broadly, and, um, I tell her I was from Alabama, and she said, "Where in Alabama?" And I said, "Hamilton," and she said, "Oh, Jerry Brown," exactly. She said she had two pieces of Jerry Brown. We met with Bureau of Tourism and Travel last year, and we walked down, and, and the director, Lisa Natale, we walked into his office, and he had a five-gallon face jug of Jerry sitting on his, on his personal desk, so if that gives you any idea...
Richard and I went to a meeting in, in, up shoulders, I carried out in college morning, you thought I'd lost her, but I found a ball chick in Cedar County, you're some fine ass, if you think I get dudged, you're a sick man, lady.
Ma, as I said, it, you know, we'll give, we'll be giving a bow off the championship whoever, but we appreciate what y'all do as a group, and the time you put in, the people like y'all, in this group right here, this is what the community's got, this is the kind of people that we need in our community.
Well, I'll make a statement, we are all born here, there are no paid positions.
Yeah, and that's, you know, the money that we give is very, very minimal, the efforts that you give, and we appreciate that very much, so I want that statement granted.
You don't think they've outgrown that building and gonna do it?
Yeah.
They have, um, they've absolutely, I was amazed that I've done that building, far out from it, and, um, they have done a good job, and I appreciate them.
Well, we look forward to working with you later on, the, uh, new multipurpose.
I'll get you a picture later someday.
There you go.
You know, sometimes we get caught up in the football and basketball, all the time, we forget about the art, it's a huge asset.
It is. We had a show combined with a couple of the local civic organizations here sponsored a, an art show at middle school back right before Christmas, and, uh, Coach Devers and Coach Roberts just could not stress how much it meant to those students, that they were just so appreciative of being able to have that, you know, the option of doing something in an art program, so there, there's a real demand, and we're hoping for bigger and better things, you know, as we grow, you know, so...
If nobody's gonna have any more questions for the conference, Ma, I'm gonna mark the button, that we did this, and Jerry, Bill, Ma, and our council, I'll make a motion.
I'll say it.
All votes?
Thank you.
Thanks, Ma.
Go, go on, Mr. James.
You're getting a good job.
Richard, I'm just gonna let you, you play golf, and blow a carpet, whatever you got to talk about, but I brought this up for two officers that, uh, one has 14 years of experience, the other has 12, uh, the last two officers that we hired, based off experience, and, uh, they have very legitimately, uh, come to town, come to me as well, wanting to be topped out, and I'm just gonna bring that back to the floor, and ask, uh, get away, and, um, and roll away accordingly. Everybody understands what Richard's talking about here, he hired the two, it's a topic I'm paid, it's all of the experience, years of experience, but honestly, it's got years of experience, and so has Loyola.
We didn't hire any top-down people?
No, we didn't hire any top-down people, because we're not topped out, they, they say that we're, we're going in the direction of hiring people based on their experience, and they have requested that their experience be taken into consideration.
Um, so that's prior experience, like, "Boy, he's been here, worked, and he left, he got that, so he's putting his years of service together to come up with that."
Right, right. All of the state troopers, what he's done, you're paying, you're working, and what you're doing is rich in the time.
Absolutely.
And I just wanna bring that back, and I don't know if the council wants to just discuss it, how you wanna do it, um, I think it's a legitimate, uh, argument that they have. I'm just making a motion, we're here to take care of that, you gotta move your own floor, you're a sergeant. I would like to hear you pitch your house, I'm coming.
Yeah.
We'll hear your party.
I know, up until just recently, we use years of service at the C, is that correct?
Uh, years of fact, yes.
Yeah, and that's why...
Well, we've been based off of a pay scale, uh, based off of...
Yeah, uh, years of service, uh, and we've done that for the other departments as well, years of service with the C, um, and are we making the exception with the police department?
What we're, what we're doing is we, basically, especially after the last hires, uh, we've seen exactly what we thought that we would see, that if you can hire based off of experience, uh, you're gonna get people that are qualified and ready to come in and do it. May I say that, if you want to do a good job?
Absolutely.
Um, I probably don't maybe, you know, discuss this too much right here, but how does the new one stack up with what our, the two that can't keep our raise, uh, from higher, are they comparative?
Absolutely. All right, Dave, most of the things, most of the things, are you a sergeant, my last motion?
Richard, have any other departments, is there, is there any other, anybody else that would be in a situation like that?
Any other departments, yeah, not that I know of, I mean, most folks that we have, we, we brought on and trained, especially like in the water department, on your city government.
Is this, I mean, this is just, this is new to me, right? Y'all wanna just take this until the next meeting, and, because I don't have a problem with it, but I, you know, it's something I...
I think we got to make sure that we're not setting expectations here about the way you look at our department, if you're on data.
If you wanna look at this, other, I would be on, uh, just, okay? Let's, 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 let's work station, let's discuss it. Okay? Okay? All right, um, and if you're talking about it, you guys called me late this afternoon, and I brought this in, I'm here to fire up the last meeting, we're talking about a fire club, we got a problem, we really didn't know what kind of problem we had with it, I made the mention that I thought we had a cracked head, when we get some water into it, or, we got a cracked head, or cracked lock, one or two, I've talked to a lot of people, James can, and James probably knows more about the people than, actually, mostly about it I know, but anyway, Baron got Bob Cashin, Bob's been looking at, you had to tell me how to get Bob Cashin, but he just sent a head in with anybody he knew in the state, and Bob checked it out and working on it, we do have a cracked head, and that's good.
That wasn't, it didn't work.
He didn't do it, they never took it, no. Uh, he took the heads off, and one of the heads is obviously, you can see it's cracked, so right now, he took the heads to have a, you research his head on a visual leg plate, or what do you do to it?
Right.
Whatever, okay, he took the heads.
Cracked, you gotta have the...
Well, he, you gotta buy one, okay, so he's gonna have the other surface, or whatever you do, I don't know anything about it, but anyway, that's where it's at, he's got the heads off, he took one head, fixed it to the other surface, or ground it, or whatever you do to it, at that point, he puts the heads back on, then he says he'll put it in a vat and check it, but he thinks that's what it is, so hopefully, we got cracked head in front, we get it, that's, that's good news. Bob, I'm glad you see y'all in the block, I should say, head for sure, pretty sure of that, and I'm gonna have Baron come, Baron come to us closer to a, to a conference. I've got to let Matt David tell y'all, voting day tomorrow, and what he got to preach all of it.
Oh, no, it's, it's just very simple, very simple. Voting day is tomorrow, and you know that, uh, we all need to go out for the price that we're paying for the rights that we have, a lot of men have died, a lot of men have served, but, uh, whenever you go vote, you think about that, just go vote.
And that's very true, okay? And, uh, hold on, seven to five tomorrow, I guess, seven, 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 okay, seven, seven minutes, um, I don't have anything else, I said, okay, I want to start us for discussion raises for the council, for the ones that may be elected next year.
Yeah, this would not be, um...
For us, I think for whoever y'all elect next year. We hit, we have made, uh, I think Winfield has won us the $500, uh, fair.
Now, this one, like they say, is fair.
Did anybody get a copy of that?
I didn't.
You have a, no, I don't have a copy. Let me tell them what Jan did, Jan went in to the, uh, Lady Guinness Foundation, and, um, and checked, uh, towns that are approximately our size to see what the, uh, the pay ranges are now, excuse me.
Okay, any comments on what Matt David's talking about? If you're gonna go through it, okay?
Winfield, city council, $500 a month, they just approved that from $400 to $500 this year. That, uh, $600 a month, I don't know what happened to Haynesville, but they're $200 a month.
We got the front row.
A-Rod, $525 a month, Gunner's Bull, $525, Demotless, uh, is $300 a month, of course, they'll have a meeting, but not just like we do, and they may raise it, Monroeville, $450 a month, and so on and so forth.
Okay. Anybody got any comments on what I'm...
Well, I think we're behind, but one thing that I hate about public service, and it's all the way down from the top to the bottom, is people that sits in the chair get to make their own salary, I know that's the law, but I hate that that's the bad...
We're not making our own salary, that'd be up to the voters.
I understand that, but I still, I don't see how you can, well, but I know we're behind, it needs to be done, if you don't, uh, you're gonna have people absolutely lose interest in your city government, and we certainly don't with that.
Well, you know, we, we're talking about the arts council, and, um, and their, their, the time they put in to volunteer, you've got the chunnel, we've got, we've got the volunteer fire department, um, you know, I sort of, when I ran for this job, I sort of took it like it's public, my public duty to do that, you know, that this is something I'm gonna do because I just felt, okay, now somebody's gotta do it, and I see where Matt David is coming from here, um, and, and we've talked about this, before we made a joke about it, I guess, but we talked about, you know, it doesn't pay our expenses, and they take social security out of it, you know, we, we, but, there again, they're volunteers, you spend your own money on your gas and what have you, so, you know, I have an expense about it.
I didn't get in this for the money. Come on, Scott, can I, can I add something?
If, if, I don't ever vote to, to raise my pay, you know, this is...
Well, I'm not sure, you may not get elected next time.
That'd be right, I may not. That'd be okay, but if I'm here next time, I'll, I still... But if I'm here next time, I won't, I still won't vote for it. I don't think it's, I don't think I should. I knew what I was gonna make when I, when I took the job.
Paid me.
And that's it, I'm a servant, I'm a public servant, and, uh, if you're depending on this three hundred dollars to make it, then you got bigger problems, and, you know, come on.
Got any comments, Scott?
It's a combination of what everybody said, I agree with Richard, we're behind, but then again, I agree with what, what Shane said, I also don't argue with him.
I'm, I'm standing for what everybody's saying, I'm standing for what Matt David's saying. And if I'm, I'm like Shane, I don't know where I'd be here, I'm not. If I am, I would never accept to raise my own pay. I'll never accept for the council to raise their own pay, I think that should be the vote, of course. But I didn't go on secretaries, there's two, there's two sides. Can't be that important. But that's definitely a law, Rick, that's...
Well, what do y'all think about petitioning?
I'll never, I'll never, I'll never, I'll never, I'll never.
I just wanna ask the police, uh, my name's Tom, does, is our postal tax coming out here, so?
Yes, for certain, that's what I'm asking. I, I would never change any, I never want the council to raise it my pay or the council's pay. We're not raising our pay, it's whoever y'all want to raise it, he might strike us. Well, that's the code, the voluntary place. Well, well, I don't strike. He is using that. I'm like, Richard, I didn't mean to, the one, but it's right, I didn't really make a comment. Well, I start thinking...
Could it be placed on the later city council election?
He definitely, I, I don't know, I mean, it's, it's, that's a good question, a lot, I don't know that. Scott, good, what, what don't you?
Scott, you want to go with fourteen years?
Yeah, it seems like more than that, I, I don't think we could do it on that, that ballot. The proper standard now is for the council to do it for the next council.
Even before I ever decided to run for this office, I've had people come in to me, you know, if you pay the mayor and the council, it might be a little better, right? That you might get better qualified people to do it. So, okay, that's another top layer.
But this has got to be something that is decided on...
By this council, or this current...
This meeting tonight?
This meeting tonight, I don't, six months from now.
I'm not gonna support that. I'm not gonna support it. Well, let me make a motion, and let's see what y'all do, okay? I'll make a motion that we raise the council pay the four hundred dollars a month. Down here, say it. I'll make another motion, die for one of the black mistakes, that we reduce it to two hundred dollars a month. To two hundred dollars a month. Do I hear a second? Motion died again, Black. Well, now we see. Any idea?
I'll make a motion with the term.
Mayor, I wanted to, uh, uh, this is not the topic center. I wanted to, if I could get on the agenda for the next meeting, or some meeting that's, uh, convenient to you. I don't have the material, I wanted to address this, uh, COVID situation over here. And I don't have the material, I'm gonna have to... Be back. I downtown, I'm waiting to get the stuff together, push on for the third Monday in this month. Okay, thank you, sir. All right, that's fine. Y'all, if you, if you, if you ladies and you gentlemen would, yeah, if y'all can get on it, I, I'd appreciate that, too. Thank you, Bill.
Yes, sir.
I second his, my last, I second his motion to term, okay? On the board?